If I did, I'd have five thousand dollars worth of ice cubes.
For the baseball team that is going to Phoenix.
Which is good. Yeah. I want to check with Lane something first.
Everybody's on their phone?
Yeah. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Guthrie Public Schools Board of Education Regular Metly Meeting for Monday, November the 10th, 2025. Roll call, please. Davis?
Here.
Gerard?
Here.
Husky?
Here.
Flag?
Here.
Pearson?
Here.
Schroeder?
Here.
Smedley?
Here.
Madam President, we have a call. Thank you. Will you please take our pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me for a moment of silence before we begin our meeting. Thank you. Okay. Agenda item number six, Presentation of Employee and Student of the Month Recognition.
Mr. Hancock?
President Smedley, Dr. Simpson, members of the board. Proud to come to you again this month with our students and employees of the month. First, let us recognize for our October Student of the Month, Ms. Nora Hudson. She's a student at Fogarty. And, you know, her, the big choice on hers was about inclusion. I guess in her classroom, there was a new student that came in and it was talked that the teacher, Ms. Gilbert, found a note, you know, telling this little girl that it was, she was glad that she was in her class and that basically she's excited that she's there and wanted to include her in a lot of things. So Ms. Nora Hudson, like I said, she was our Student of the Month for October from Fogarty. Our Supportive Employee of the Month is Ms. Stacy Freeman. She was nominated by Laura Benham. Ms. Freeman is a paraprofessional in our autism room at the high school. Some of the things that were said about her was that on a daily basis, she comes in and she has that smile right there that you see. I mean, it's just, there's not a time that she really shows anything that's going on, whether it's some of the activities that go on in that class and things like that. But she always has a smile on her face every day that she comes in. So that was one of the big things that stood out in her nomination for Ms. Benham. And then our Certified Employee would be Ms. Sherwin LaGranne. And if you notice, it says nominated by the junior high staff, talking about everything she does for the school and IT and helping them out and being involved with the athletics and her, Ms. Rice, preparing the concession stands and all that. You know, there was plenty of things to go on. It was a page and a half nomination, but I just want to make sure that we can show our appreciation of Ms. LaGranne as well. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, Comments to the Board by Citizens Registered to Speak.
We have none.
Comments to the Board by Board Members. Okay. Agenda item number eight, Superintendent's Report.
We've had a lot of success with our students since we last met. GHS Cross Country Team closed out a highly successful season at the state meet. The boys finished third while the girls finished seventh. Junior Taylor Schroeder from the girls' team finished 10th and Senior Isaiah Blevins was the fourth place finisher from the boys' team. And both were named All-State by virtue of their top 10 finish. Our football team defeated Lawton High Friday to finish the regular season with an 8-2 record and a 6-1 in district play. And we'll play Bishop McGinnis at The Rock Friday night at kickoff is at 7:00 p.m. And this week, our schools will celebrate Veterans Day by honoring those who have served this country. The high school band and choir and junior ROTC will participate in the parade and ceremonies at Honor Park because of how many students were involved in the community celebration. They'll have their assembly, I believe, is that on Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Throckmorton? And then very proud of how our students and staff continue to show their appreciation of the veterans of this community. And we thank, of course, we thank all the veterans for their service to our country. Also, as a side note, that football game Friday night, because it is, coincides with Veterans Day, and this is a decision made by the OSSAA, veterans will, can attend that game for free as well. So excited about that and this week. Due to the federal government shutdown, I sent out a letter to all parents on October 28th detailing the options for help that we can provide as well as other community resources. And the important thing is that children from families who've had a loss in income may now be eligible for free or reduced meals. And so I wanted to make sure that that was out in front of those families. And the letter included a link to the application which can be completed online. The letter also included community resources for food assistance. And it does appear we may have some progress and hope we can return to normal soon on that front. And then the last thing that I have is the District Teacher of the Year Celebration will be Monday, February 23rd of 2026. And that will be at Meridian South Campus on Division. And that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Simpson. Okay. Agenda item number nine, Crossline Construction Update.
Thank you, guys. We don't have a lot of construction going on right now. We have a few, both sides, Colorado and Charlotte, we have a few miscellaneous correction items that we're working with the architect on that are mine, but we're hearing there every now and then. But not much going on there. We're currently in the process of bidding out the majority of all, except for what we're voting on tonight for the high school wrestling room. And so the bids will open up on the 19th. So we're looking through that. That's pretty much it. Do you guys have any questions about anything we're doing right now?
No.
All right. Thanks, Lane.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number 10, Consent Agenda. Do we have an approval? I mean, a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
David?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Agenda item 11A, Business Agenda, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Contractual Agreement with Aaron?
Fuah.
Fuah. Okay. Deaf or hard-of-hearing certified teacher for 2025-2026.
This agreement is necessary to provide students the services that are required for their, because of their disability. Would recommend approval.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the contract agreement with Aaron Fuah, deaf or hard-of-hearing certified teacher for 2025-2026.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Agenda item 11B, Recommendation, Consideration, and Action Upon Agreement with Oklahoma State University Speech Language Hearing Lab, Department of Communication Science and Disorders.
This is on pages 72 through 78 of your packet. This is, we have done this in the past and recommend approval. This will allow us potentially to be able to find some of these specialized folks that could transition actually into our staffing and get us off of some of the contracts that we're required to have if we don't have those people on staff to provide services for our students. We recommend approval.
Madam President, I move we approve the agreement with the Oklahoma State University Speech Language Hearing Lab, Department of Communication Science and Disorders.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Agenda item 11C, Discussion, Consideration, and Vote to Award Contract for Construction of the New Wrestling Facility for Guthrie High School to the Lowest Respondable Bidders as follows. Bid Package 13A, Pre-Engineered Metal Building, Red Dot Buildings, in the amount of $224,089.
Lane, is there any, anything you want to add about this?
The only thing is that this smaller amount of this line item was lower than the budget. It's not even the budget we expect to put that line item. So that doesn't really give us a picture of the whole project, but it's good for us.
Very good.
Lane, what do we have budgeted for that?
For the, for this specific line item, you is $260,000.
$260,000. Okay.
Where are, where is this company located?
Texas. I've done a project with them before and they work very successfully.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
Madam President, I move we approve the contract for construction of the new wrestling facility for Guthrie High School to the lowest possible bidder as follows. Bid Package 13A, Pre-Engineered Metal Building to Red Dot Buildings for $224,089.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Smedley? Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Agenda item 11D, Discussion, Consideration, and Vote to Accept the Initial Guaranteed Maximum Price Proposed by Crossline Construction Company for Construction of the New Wrestling Facility of Guthrie High School and to Approve the Initial Guaranteed Maximum Amendment to the Construction Management Contract between Guthrie Public Schools and Crossline Construction Company dated October the 13th, 2025.
What this, this document, page 79 to 87, essentially does is it, it itemizes the bid that we just approved along with the associated costs for the construction with the CM and their fees and would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
Madam President, I move we to accept the initial guaranteed maximum price proposed by Crossline Construction Company for Construction of the New Wrestling Facility of Guthrie High School and to Approve the Initial Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment to the Construction Management Contract between Guthrie Public Schools and Crossline Construction Company dated October 13th, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroeder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Agenda item 12, Proposed Executive Session for the Purpose of Discussing Employment of Personnel, FMLA Request, Resignation, Separation from Employment, and Transfer of Position Request, All Is Set Out on the Personnel Reports, Disclosure of Which Information Would Violate the Confidentiality Requirements of State and/or Federal Law, All Pursuant to 25 Oklahoma Statutes, Section 307(b) 1 and 7.
Madam President, I make a motion, we go into executive session?
Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Flag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes. Schroeder? Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
Seven, I am zero nades.
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11C, discussion, consideration, and vote to accept the initial guaranteed maximum price proposed by Crossland Construction Company for construction of the new wrestling facility of Guthrie High School and to approve the initial guaranteed maximum amendment to the construction management contract between Guthrie Public Schools and Crossland
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11D, discussion, consideration, and vote to accept the initial guaranteed maximum price proposed by Crossland Construction Company for construction of the new wrestling facility of Guthrie High School and to approve the initial guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction management contract between Guthrie Public Schools and Crossland
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11D, discussion, consideration, and vote to accept the initial guaranteed maximum price proposed by Crossland Construction Company for construction of the new wrestling facility of Guthrie High School and to approve the initial guaranteed maximum price amendment to the construction management contract between Guthrie Public Schools and Crossland
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Gerard?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.
Agenda item 11B, recommendation, consideration, and action to accept any resignations offered since the posting of the agenda.
We have none.
Agenda item 16, discussion and possible action on new business not known about or could not have been reasonably foreseen at the time of the agenda posting.
We have none.
Agenda item 17, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes. First. Second. Roll call, please. Davis?
Yes.
Husky?
Yes.
Plag?
Yes.
Pearson?
Yes.
Schroder?
Yes.
Smedley?
Yes.
7 i's, 0 n's.